I'd like to call the meeting to order. This is the June 2021 Central School District Board of Directors Monthly Meeting. Sorry, we're running a few minutes late. We had a Budget Committee meeting just prior to this. So we've just gotten through that and are getting organized now to start our normal board meeting. With that, let's go ahead and start with the flag salute. Jerry, since this is your last official meeting, would you mind leading us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. We can go ahead and if we're ready, move into some staff appreciation.
I want to do a couple of things. We do have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. We have shifted, we have both Polk County Youth and Family Behavioral Health, and then the School Based Health Center will be, we'll actually move them up before public comment today. And then we did remove, it was on the agenda, but because of the Budget Committee meeting today, we did remove off the budget, excuse me, off of the business agenda, the approval of the budget. That will, has been moved to our special June 21st meeting. And then we also did remove the executive session to consider the employment of a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual agent, ORS 1926602A. So that was removed also. So those are the only changes to the agenda.
Okay.
We are still going to executive session, correct?
Okay.
Now we're going to go into some staff appreciation.
Okay.
So joining us this evening, and I know that we're going to start to bring them into the virtual room. We have the Central School District Nutrition Services staff. So I'm going to have Alex Singer come to the microphone for one minute. He is the manager of our nutrition services. He's just going to do some first introductions of the entire team by their building. So again, once they're all in, I'm going to give Emily a minute. Just give us a minute as we make sure that they are all in the room. Yep. So Alex is going to begin with some introductions of the staff. Yes, please, please.
So for nutrition staff, we have, as a design of high school, we have Donna Kane, Otisia Sanchez, Rosa Cripio, and Kristen Blackwell. At Monmouth Elementary, we have Alora Cuellar, Kevin Morris, Benny Brederston. At Ash Creek Elementary, Sheila Seeborn, Gabby Rivas, she's there on the screen. That's Bronza Diaz. At Calmidge, we have Cindy Mathis, Marina Rodriguez, Lori White, Michelle Holmes, and Mel Peeler. And at Independent Elementary, we have Linda Orozco and Belle Roman. And Belle's birthday, working with us, was March, the birthday of the merger. And we have two more staff, we have Dee Fenneller in the office, and we have Mary Wilson, who worked with us to grant the patient to ensure everything is ready.
Thanks, Alex. So just to give a little bit more background, since March 16th of 2020, this phenomenal, these phenomenal employees have been feeding our students up to three meals each day. By the end of June, that will be one year and three months that this entire crew has been working and serving our students, the entire time. Again, that's one year and three months straight. They have been serving meals to our CSD 13J students. As of last Friday, which was June 4th, they have served a total of 534,647 meals served to our community. Through all the ups and downs, adjustments and changes which they maneuvered with us, this amazing team has stayed steady. We are so thankful for their dedication, service, and their parts, and I mean that from the bottom of my heart, in feeding our students so they are ready to learn. To show our appreciation, each employee will receive a certificate of awesomeness awarded on this day, June 7th, 2021, for serving more than 500,000 meals to the children of Independence and Monmouth. And it's signed by myself and then our Board of Director Chair, Steve Love. And then you also see right behind where Cease is, if Cease can wave for me, there is a poster there that will be hanging in each of the buildings from the many thanks and praises to all of you, from all of our staff, by hitting that 500,000 mark. So we just want to do a huge thank you and shout out to the entire team for that accomplishment this year. So again, from the bottom of our hearts, and then I'm going to open it up to the board, we thank you again for all that you have and will continue to do for our students in nutrition services and in Central School District. So thank you, thank you so much for everything that you all have done this year. And then I would just open up the floor for anyone else to share with them. If anyone would like to.
Thank you and keep up the amazing work. I have a home right next to La Clonia Amistad Apartments, and I see the two ladies back there every day, rain or shine. And it's just awesome to see the kids that are able to go through there. I saw them last, the beginning of when it all started last year, through the summer, through the winter, when it got dark at 3:30 in the afternoon, they were there, still there. And I just think that not only them, but everybody in, as part of it, is just, it's impressive. The number is impressive. And if I had a hat on, it would be off to you all.
Yeah, I'll echo what Al said and Superintendent said. Amazing, amazing job by everybody involved. And I kind of remember when we first started serving the meals last year. Just, I mean, we were one of the, it was one of the few kind of efforts in the community that said, we don't care kind of what's going on, we're going to make sure that we're serving the kids. And just figured it out. And to the whole team and to Alex, I mean, you guys did a phenomenal job and continue to do it. And I know that the community and the kids just really, really benefit from what you guys do. So thank you.
And this is Cease, and for all of the work they've done. And the program probably pivoted six times in the first four weeks. And we've all been through that, right? Where, oh, this, oh, it changed, oh, no, it changed again. And really, this team changed, they innovated, they figured it out, like we said. But Alex, reading the pages and pages and pages of guidance, advocating, Alex contacting ODE and saying, this is what's working, this is what we need. This is, hey, we don't need that, we don't, that won't work. He has done a tremendous job of actually creating the programming and statewide, having an influence on how this has worked for kids. He's written letters to our federal delegation to make sure that it continued through this school year, through this summer, and now into next year. And he has been a champion of our students and his amazing team. So definitely want to make sure he gets the love, but our kitchen staffs, bar none. And they've had some support, folks that aren't on here, who have helped with those meals, folks who were not food service, who jumped up and volunteered to work all summer, work most of Christmas break, most of spring break. It's been a phenomenal effort. And it is appreciated by our community and by all of us. Some heroes don't wear capes, they wear aprons.
Because I would also just comment, obviously agreeing with what everybody else said too, but that, just comment on the faithfulness of the staff to just be out there all the time. It's reassuring as a community member, but also reassuring to the kids I know to know that they can go to the same place they went to yesterday and be given a meal, or several meals, or whatever the case might be. And, and as I think somebody mentioned, flexibility is, you know, sometimes it was one meal, and then it became like a whole day's worth of meal. And then we adjusted and gave out like, I think, a week's worth of meals. And, you know, the flexibility and faithfulness to just continue to do whatever is necessary to do. And that's an encouraging thing to see as a community member, and especially as a board member. So thank you, all of you.
My hat's off to the staff that put this together, Alex, because they don't get paid very much. And they showed a lot of dedication and changed my attitude about school meals. So thank you for all that you have done and all that your staff has done.
Maybe say there's a few days, they come up with great ideas and keep up their spirits. You know, one thing they really said is, it was great to see the children. The kids were happy to see me, you know, some of the faces, I know it's my face. So it was really good for them to see you as well. To see some of the parents and a lot of our, always that, for the people as well.
All right, I got to taste my son's chicken and rice, little deal, and it was so delicious. And I don't know what came up with that, but it was great.
A lot of students come over to the gate afterwards, and they bring their sack lunch and stuff with them. And I very seldom see them throwing anything out. And they, we have other choices for them to make there too, and they still eat what's in the bag. That has to be a testimony to the goodness of the food.
Yeah. All right, thank you very much. And we will get all of these appreciative certificates out to all of you. And thank you posters for the job well done. And I know that, again, I'm just excited to have that team and to continue that work as we go into the summer. And then we reset for the fall, as I'll say it, and maybe get back to the, a little bit of normal, what we know is, is food service and nutrition services in our schools. So we're excited about that as well. So thank you all.
Okay, I think we're on to special board member recognition.
So tonight, we would also like to recognize one of our board members, Jerry Schinkel, as this is his last board meeting with us tonight. So Jerry has served on the Board of Directors for Central School District since 2013. Within Central School District, there have been several generations of Schinkels actively involved within the school district. That's athletics, that's, that's success of students in the classroom, and that's the support of students in the theater, to give a couple of examples of just the impact that the Schinkel family has had. Jerry and his late wife Linda have been supports of all students, not just their family, but within the community. They truly have been a tremendous part of our Central School District family. So I've sort of had some feelers out, and then again, I'm going to open it up to the board as well. But in just having conversations with our leadership and reflecting on your service, Jerry, within Central School District, we have truly appreciated your voice in negotiations throughout the years as a board member, that's really important. I know it was important before I came here, but has been very important as we've continued that process in building our relationships with our, with our union leaders. We appreciate your advocacy for students that sometimes are marginalized. I will never forget that during my interview process, I remember sitting in the room in the high, I remember it still to this day, sitting in a room in the high school. And Jerry's very clearly and adamantly at me saying that he has this expectation that, that not only will we make sure that our students are college-ready, but that we would make sure that we would build a robust career pathways for students in Central School District. I still remember that, you saying that to me. And that continues, and that is really becoming a reality with the work that the high school is doing, specifically with the high school success funding focused on the career and technical education pathways. And just to listen to senior awards as CTE and art and accounting and the multimedia pathways that they continue to build, and that we're seeing the high school and their leadership continue to build in all their pathways. We're just excited to see that, and you're a part of that, Jerry, of helping and making sure that we have those pathways for our students. As we know, we also know that the engagement of the Schinkel family in its service will continue as his son Byron will be joining the Board of Directors here in July. So that's, that's sort of fun to continue that pathway, even though he is going to, this is really your last meeting, and right away, your son's going to come in in July. So we're excited about that as well. So tonight, to honor Jerry for his service, we would like to present this engraved plaque which reads, "In appreciation to Jerry Schinkel, School Board Member 2013 through 2021, for your dedication and service to the children and patrons of Central School District 13J." So will you please join me in thanking Jerry for his services here in Central?
It's kind of like my funeral, people.
And then I would just open it up to the board for those of you that have been with Jerry for some time.
So you want us to say bad things about you?
That's the truth.
One thing I would say about a lot of the involvement, my late wife, Blessed P. Pickenheart, was known as Ma Schink to I don't know how many kids since my daughter started high school here in Fall of '78. And my wife was always a mother to gobs and gobs of kids. A lot of them would stop by in the morning for French toast before they went to school. And anyway, a lot of the, a lot of the credit would go, most of the credit would go to her because she's a great advocate for kids. And, but I thank you for this, for the recognition. It's been fun. There've been times when it wasn't, but I remember once that some stuff came over the social media that said I was a dinosaur and ought to be replaced. Well, now they're going to get their wish. So, but I, I'm probably old school as far as, is my outlook on how things should be done. I'm all for helping kids help themselves, you know. I'm just going to spin the yarn here, won't be quite a yarn. Our six kids all have, well, one of them has a law degree, four of them have masters. Ask me how many tuition checks I wrote, the answer is zero. We petted him on the head and says, we don't do college tuition. You want to go to school, wire and mooch off us, go to school locally, that's fine, but you're on your own as far as raking up the money. And amazingly enough, they all still speak to me. So anyway, I hope you guys stay the course. It's been, I have respect for all of you, even though sometimes we may not agree on philosophy or politics or how a school should be run. But you're all stand-up people, and Jen, I've always respected you for your leadership. And, you know, this past year, no matter what you do, nobody would like it, including you. So anyway.
Fair to say.
But, you know, it looks like we're going to get through it. And so, anyway, thank you very much, all of you, for all you do and all you're going to do. So, anyway.
Thank you for keeping it real. And thanks for helping me come on board, you and I started at the same time. Only I had to pay the $10 to get registered, you just got written in. So you got in cheaper than I did.
Yeah, first time I got in for nothing.
But it has.
With 33 votes, by the way.
It was good to work alongside of you as we learned all the acronyms and how to use all of the school systems and understand education jargon and whatnot. So I appreciate that. And I'm especially going to miss you because you leaving now makes me the oldest board member.
Okay.
Thank you, Jerry. Thank you for your, your dry sense of humor, for being a straight shooter, and for just always being that proponent for all types of careers and covering the full gamut. That voice, I mean, I think your, your involvement, presence on the board, I think that voice is going to last for a long time. So.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Well, you know, electrician or plumber or welder, mechanic, can go one year to trade school, not run up much student debt, make half again more than a teacher. So, you know, sometimes I wonder what's wrong with this picture, but I, you know, I don't think college is for everybody.
Yeah.
Because, you know, a lot of kids just not much into book learning. But like to work with their hands, we need those people.
Absolutely. Okay, shall we put Jerry back to work now?
We shall.
We're not done yet.
Or not.
I remember growing up with Joe, your son, seeing you at everything. Any type of event that Joe was a part of, or you, Joe wasn't a part of, I remember seeing you a lot. I was happy to join the board with you and, and have a few of the same visions as far as CTE programs and those types. I wasn't aware how strongly you felt about them, but it made me feel more comfortable being more vocal about that, because I too have seen that, that a lot of kids, a lot of kids that I, they meet in the wrestling room are not looking for that four-year experience after, after school. And, you know, want to get right to work. And there wasn't a lot available to them. And so, and I think all of that is changing, as Jen was saying at the beginning of the meeting, with all the different CTE programs that she noticed at the awards night. I wish, I think it's still streaming, I think I can still catch that. But just hearing that is going to be great. But I know that you're a big proponent, and I thank you for that. And, and yeah, we'll grab another Schinkel on board, so.
Yeah, yeah, so the pox will continue.
All right. Go ahead.
So we're going to switch a little bit. Joining us this evening, we have two people. First and foremost, Karen Rummington, who is actually here in the room. She's going to come up to the podium here from, she is from Salem Health, and she is our administrator at the Central Health and Wellness Center. So she's going to go first. And then after her, we're going to have Carrie Blum, who is the Division Manager for Youth and Family Behavioral Health in Polk County. In April, the board had asked to hear from both of the agencies. So both Karen and Carrie are here today to update the board with some of the statistics and what they have been seeing and working through as it relates to the health center and then Youth and Family Behavioral Health during the COVID-19 times. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen Rummington to begin. Thanks for joining us this evening.
Thanks so much for having me, I appreciate it. So, as you all know, healthcare was significantly impacted, like every other business, by COVID. I wanted to just give you information about how it impacted the School Based Health Center, Central Health and Wellness Center, and specifically how it impacted the students with our clinic. And initially, you may be aware, in March, we actually closed all outpatient services that were not necessary, not only in our clinic, but in all of the clinics and hospitals as well. All hands on deck at the hospitals to try to manage the influx of patients there. So we quickly shifted to a modified outpatient service where we just kept people that had respiratory symptoms that were potentially COVID symptoms, separated from everyone else. And we did not open any of our clinics at all for any in-person visits for several weeks. And we ramped up as quickly as we could to begin offering virtual visits, trying to get people signed up for MyChart so that they could do video visits with their providers as a last resort, telephone visits with their providers, and began to move in that direction. And then moving fast forward, we finally are back, back in the clinic full-time with one provider. And to try and catch up for the backlog of what we were not able to see, we canceled lots of well-child checks and things like that. We do have a second provider, so we've got one, one medical provider in person and one virtual, still virtual for people that still do not want to come in. But overall, for our student visits, we were, as you probably were aware, since 2015, when we opened every year, we had been increasing our visits, our student visits. We got to a point where the last full year, we were about 2,500 visits. And then with the first, with the year when, for the 19 to 20 school year, we dropped off by about 1,000 visits because of the last four months of being impacted by COVID. And, and this year so far, we're still a little bit, we'll probably come out about the same. But what we haven't changed is behavioral health is still only being serviced, not in person at the clinic, but on virtually. And Carrie's going to talk a little bit about that when I'm through. So just so you know, we've also, starting in, just about a month ago, May, the middle, the second week of May, we began offering COVID vaccines at the School Based Health Center. Currently, Polk County and Marion County had been doing only mass vaccination sites, and the closest one here was over at Western. But they're going, they're going to try to move away from that and to get all of the vaccines being administered back in physicians' offices. And Central Health and Wellness Center is one of those sites. So we will continue to administer COVID vaccines to, and we have the Pfizer one right now, to all of, all of the community, as well as any students right now, 12 and over. There has been some talk about that being expanded to younger students. And as soon as it becomes FDA-approved and available, we will offer it to younger students as well. So for the first month, we administered only, well, only about 92 vaccines to adults and 23 to students. The student, the 12 to 16-year-old ones were not available until about two weeks ago, I think, to be given to that young age. So that's where we are right now. So that's where we are right now. The um, one positive thing is that despite the what happened with COVID, we really tried to keep up on our students' the overall vaccination rates. So as soon as we opened the doors, we, we started calling all the kids that were behind on uh, getting their regular vaccines, like for measles and mumps, rubella and tetanus and all of the vaccines that they normally have to gotten, get. And we did have an increase of about nine percent from the previous year in our vaccination rate for students. So we were able to maintain that. Um, but as I say, our overall visits were a little behind and uh, trying to get all those kids back in for their well-child checks and up to um, is what our target will be throughout the summer and into the first few months of the school year next year. Any questions for me before Carrie gives some information on specifically on the behavioral health portion of a clinic?
I, I have one. Um, do you have any, any type of data that would have information as far as um, how many uh, Latino population students um, and, and folks are just, are going in to visit the Central Wellness Center? Is there bilingual opportunity for them or, or bilingual staff there to, to help them? Um, are the, I'm sure there's pamphlets and whatnot that are both in Spanish and English. Uh, can you fill me in on, or fill us in on some of that information?
Sure. Um, yes, a hundred percent of all of our written material, including what we provide to patients after their visit, is available in both English and Spanish. So we um, have that available for everyone. We are, have not been successful in, in hiring a Spanish-speaking physician for the clinic. However, all our staff are bilingual and do speak Spanish, so the person that answers the phone, the person, the receptionist, the medical assistant. And so for the portion of the visit with, that the provider needs to carry on with the patient alone, we have um, we have an iPad where there's actually a virtual person on there that we take into the room with us and they, we have them interpret on the iPad. Um, for the physician, for the provider. Uh, but the MAs and the rest of the staff are bilingual. And I do collect that data. The state, part of our state requirement is that we collect data, including um, preferred language, ethnicity. All of that information is provided on an annual basis to the year. And I haven't done this year's yet because it will be due in July. But previous, from my recollection, our previous um, data has usually been about sixty percent English, forty percent Spanish.
Oh, that's tired of that.
In, and in our clinic. And that includes community members as well as students, not just the students.
Yeah, perfect. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
So this is Peggy. Um, and I'm actually on virtual. And um, does my chart have the availability for um, for Spanish language as well, or is it strictly just English?
It, we are working on improving that. There's only certain parts of it that are available in Spanish, but we are working on making that totally um, you know, like I said, if there's a Spanish-speaking provider on the other end, or we, we can use the iPad to interpret um, during visits. But um, I'm not a hundred percent sure that all of the documentation in my chart is available in both languages. But that is something that's being worked on.
Okay, so maybe, maybe my chart isn't a useful tool for them, for, for non-um, English speakers, uh, for emergencies or contacting their doctor from home. So.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Oh, I was just saying that maybe my chart is, 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 it just seems like my chart may not be, um, if, if it's not.
If it's not.
Yeah, then it would be difficult for them to contact their doctor, um, using that, that um, that portal.
That is correct, if it's not one hundred percent. And I don't believe it is right now.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Karen before we hand it over to Carrie to share as well?
Thank you, Karen.
We'll let Carrie start and I can, I can answer.
All right, Carrie, all. Thanks for joining us and please share a way.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Thank you for having me today. Um, as the superintendent indicated, I'm Carrie Blum with Polk County Behavioral Health. And I've been delighted to be working in a partnership with uh, the Central Health and Wellness Center since the very beginning, which many of you were part of creating. Uh, Polk County Behavioral Health is the mental health component and partner to Central Health and Wellness Center. And as Karen was indicating, it's been a heck of a year this last year. And we were able to switch over to do telehealth, um, which is an experience much like this meeting today, uh, with fewer people, of course, but it's allowed us to never cancel an appointment and never close from the beginning of the pandemic through today. So that's been um, a real uh, area of um, good fortune that the school districts uh, Chromebooks have been supporting students being able to access a, a large variety of healthcare, including ongoing mental health services. Polk County provides therapists in the Central Health and Wellness Center. And our intention is to be back in there once we're able to make those adjustments this fall. Um, part of the challenge has been with the number of people that we work with and um, certainly with um, the importance of including family in the work that we do. Uh, half of our therapists, we have two therapists that rotate through the clinic, are bilingual, bicultural. And currently, uh, as of today, we're seeing a hundred and nineteen students, um, which is actually a little low, um, in part because we're seeing a lag in individuals seeking service uh, during the pandemic. Um, what we are anticipating is a significant increase as we move into the fall and students come back to school. Uh, it's a typical statewide um, phenomenon that there's an increase in seeking mental health services following breaks in school. So after Christmas break or after the long summer break, there's usually a spike in students seeking mental health services. Uh, our uh, hypothesis is that we're gonna see a pretty large um, spike in need when students uh, finally do come back uh, into the school buildings in the fall. So that's what we're preparing for at this time. Um, another thing that I wanted to highlight is that um, Jen and I have been able to be part of the Polk and Marion Executive System Care Committee. This is an Oregon Health Authority uh, requirement that helps coordinate uh, the array of services that are available to youth uh, throughout our community and strives to improve coordination of services, integration of services, and really look at high-level systems issues uh, to problem solve and remove barriers that we identify in the community and push up through um, systems to address to the state. Most recently, Jen and I have been involved with uh, really pushing the Oregon Health Authority to take on some regulatory changes with commercial insurance companies that currently uh, create delays in accessing health services, particularly mental health services for students. Our goal is to uh, be able to enhance access of healthcare for students in schools without barriers that are currently in place with commercial insurance. So it's a complicated topic, but suffice it to say that our goal is to increase access and reduce waiting times for students. Um, and we'll continue to take those challenges on. One uh, final thing that I wanted to share is um, uh, an event that's coming up on June fifteenth. That is an event of celebration and it is through the effort of our Central Health and Wellness Center with a grant that we received through the Oregon Health Authority to reduce stigma and increase access for students in the community, in particular Hispanic students and their families. Our goal has been to reach out, to involve them, and we've done so by having focus groups with students, their families, and various community members to hear what some of the barriers are, to hear what some of their ideas are. And they've been very inspiring and very active in this effort. Uh, the outcome is that they have created and acted in a video that will be debuting on June fifteenth uh, as a district-wide event. And we're promoting it uh, with the students and the video along with uh, T-shirts that will be printed up for all students in the district and district employees with the hashtag that we're promoting the wellness with, uh, which is courage equals change. So um, I'm sure that um, you're all invited and I hope that you would have the opportunity to come. I realize that you're, you're busy, but this is a nice celebration that will have um, uh, opening for families and uh, students to celebrate, learn more about resources, receive a free T-shirt. We have uh, free burritos and ice cream and other things to promote and remind people of how to access health services in the community and then the opportunity to, to see the video as well. So it's five thirty to seven on Tuesday, June fifteenth.
And that's at the high school, correct? Yep, that's at the high school.
And that's it for my report. Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today.
Questions for Carrie?
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Karen. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's gonna be in the cafeteria?
I believe we're doing it outside because it's, it's sort of a walk-through and uh, be able to have food and entertainment and uh, some health and some resources uh, for families just to be able to connect with and um, I don't, actually, I, I will find that out and put that in the Friday report. I don't know the exact detail of that. We just received today the, the flyer, so we'll be sharing that out publicly. Um, I, it's been fun to listen to them as they have done the focus groups and um, we're waiting for the final view of the, of the, of video. And again, several of you that were, have been on the board, remember the Alone video. Originally, I think it was about four years ago, we did that. Uh, we're working with that same company, so we're really excited to see. Uh, and as, as Carrie said, this is from Student Voices and, and our families within the Latinx community. So we're, we're really excited to, to be able to debut that. So that again, is gonna be Tuesday, June fifteenth from five thirty-seven and I will get the specific information of where exactly that is, so. Great partnership that we continue to have with both organizations.
Yeah, it's awesome. Are we uh, backing up the CEA update?
I will do that after communication.
So now we're going to communicate, public communication, okay. So this is the section of our meeting where we have uh, comments from the public. Um, we limit those to three minutes and uh, avoid any type of personnel discussions. But do we have uh, any public comments tonight? Okay. We have one here in the room. Is that all we have, Emily? Okay, great.
Thank, thank you for taking my comments. I appreciate it. And also, thank you for letting me stay here so I didn't have to go home and log in. Very nice. So uh, my request tonight is pretty simple in nature. I would like to request that at some point soon, the um, board open these meetings up to in-person public attendance. Um, and the reason for that is my experience on the budget committee, being here in person, is so much more enhanced versus trying to, I mean, the internet works, it's fine, but it's just not the same experience. And so um, personally, it would be very much appreciated if we could open that up sometime in the future to um, however that format looks. Uh, I know I would be one to try to sign up for that. So that was all I had for you is just a request for that consideration. Thank you.
It's a very fair request and I think one will
We're getting close.
Towards here soon, so. Yep, thank you. Okay, now, we are on, back to standard reports and our association reports. So do you want to introduce that?
Sure, and I don't remember who's joining us today from CEA. Jane Elliott will be joining us. Can I get her promoted?
Presentation we have on the agenda.
Yes.
There she is.
Hi, am I coming through all right?
Yes.
Great. Um, let me see, uh, am I able to share my screen? I have a little bit of a slideshow.
Emily will share that and then you should be able to see it.
I'll just talk you through it.
Perfect.
Yep, so um, well, the first thing I wanted to say that's really exciting is that our kids are back in the building. Um, we've been seeing them for the last, must be a month and a half now. Um, we've also been able to start up all of our sports pictured here, so um, our athletics are back, the kids are out on the field, they're having a great time. Um, and able to be in contact with each other again, which is um, just really important to their social development. Um, if you go to the next slide. Yeah, so this is fun, that the theater program has kept the productions alive this year um, by videoing and streaming all of their theater productions. So they're in the middle of doing that for their production Star Mites. Um, and they're gonna be doing some work with the CTE program too, to uh, film that in the style of an eighties music video and have that streaming for a live audience. Um, and they're working on that all week this week. I know that Jeff and Wendy are staying late nights. Um, and the next one is Avid. We were able to celebrate our avid seniors by honoring them with a senior night. Um, many of our avid seniors have been accepted to colleges. Um, some of them are going to be the first in their family to attend college, so it was really nice to have them for a celebration and giving them certificates and awards and just really honor them in the school building. Um, we were represented at the George Floyd commemoration. Um, down at the park, we had two speakers from CHS. So one was one of our colleagues, Esmeralda. And she spoke and so did one of our students, Dominique Graves, who is the president of CHS's Black Panther Student Union. So it was nice to see that student leadership and activism out in the community. And then we have a lot of slides about CTE and I won't read them all, but I did want to leave them in just so you could see how much the CTE program is doing and growing, especially since y'all were talking about that at the beginning of the meeting. So um, in a year when a lot of programs have had to be cut, we've seen our CTE program continue to grow. So we are actually introducing a new program of study, Theater Tech, which is gonna have two pathways, tech theater and theater management. Um, and the theater program itself is just growing exponentially. So uh, class enrollment in the theater program is up over fifty percent. And they do a great job getting the kids involved. So um, we had seventeen students participate in the state test being convention, five students compete in the district for solo and ensemble festival. Um, we've had those productions going on all year and streaming for, for our school and our community. Um, we also um, are now forklift trainer certified, so we can train and certify students to operate a forklift, um, which is a skill they can take with them when they graduate and uh, you know, make money straight out of graduation. Um, Donna, our principal, was joking today that she wanted her own forklift certification. Um, yeah, our Greenhouse students and FFA leadership team produced and sold over ninety-six hundred dollars of product in our twenty-twenty-one plant sale. Um, and they wanted to send a thank you to the Central FFA Alumni Organization for helping us make that sale happen. Um, yeah, printed over forty-two custom banner posters, sticker orders this year and created over forty custom award wood plaques. Um, so the kids are just doing a lot of real hands-on work that's gonna be like saleable skills for the world. Let's see, what's next? Yep, this one's cool. It's a, it's an art project. They've collaborated to make a CHS zine in CTE. Um, illustrating recipes, guides, stories of experiences of being a teen in quarantine. Um, and those are going to be available for staff and students that leave this week. Um, our graphic design, two and three students are preparing to use those skills in the real world. They're creating their online portfolios. Um, through the end of May, so they should be done by now. Yep, and then I wanted to put this one at the end, so you Yep, and then I wanted to put this one at the end, so you can see our CTE program has made a comprehensive website. So you can go on and see for yourself all of the amazing things that that program's been up to at our school. And then I wanted to end with the graduation stuff, what we've been doing for our seniors. So we've really tried to make the senior experience as normal and celebratory as possible this year. So we were able to have a senior extravaganza for them, a party celebrating them at Greenville Barn. It was on May first. They also had their normal sunrise ceremony, and there's a link there. You can go to that video and see the sunrise ceremony. It's about a minute and a half. If you want to do that, or if you want to just save that and know that that's something that you can go see. The pet band, it was their first performance in seventeen months, and they were able to play the seniors off on Thursday and Friday of their last week of school. We were able to livestream our graduation and senior awards. So that's like a continuation of all the live streaming our our school's been able to do this year of our activities and events. And then, of course, we were able to have a live graduation ceremony. It's the last thing for our seniors, which we celebrated on Friday and sent them all off into the world. And that's what I've got.
Very good.
Thank you. Almost sounds like a regular year.
That brings us to our financial reports.
And included in your board packet was a report that is our, basically, the budget. We're winding up, and so it shows how we are comparing with our actual expenditures and any encumbrances we have left. And what we anticipate spending. That was a report that was as of April thirtieth and. Shows a pretty, some significant balances and spent as we've talked about. Those funds will be carried forward and many of them spent over this summer or into the following years.
So we're not going to try and spend eighteen million dollars?
I didn't think we could do that. That is, when eighty-six percent of our budget is people, it's really hard to spend a lot of money on stuff. Yep, so things tracking as we expected in a very strange year.
So the board cruises out?
The there, yeah, sorry, the board mobile, the board cruise. We have uses for the money. And we appreciate y'all not getting ethics complaints.
Well, don't we have CD do those?
Again, we there there are so many things that this year that they have accomplished at the high school that I think that there are some good next steps that will. As we move back into being in the buildings, some good things are are going to come forward from what they're doing over there.
Thanks, Sees. So that brings us to our equity, equity report. Do we have Micah and Antonia?
Yep, joining us this evening as I jump on is Michael Walker. She's a teacher at Monmouth Elementary. And then Antonia, which she goes by Toni Casilla, who is the instructional assistant at Independence Elementary to update the board on our progress. With the District Equity Committee, so welcome.
Who are we? What do we do? We are a team.
All right, all you.
Are you the intro or am I me? Hello, yeah, my name is Toni. I am an IA over at IS, part of the Central School District Equity Committee. I'm happy to do some updates on what we've been up to lately. Move, oh, here's an outline of what we're going to be talking about today. Well, just go ahead and get right into it. Um, so first up, we had the amazing opportunity to participate in a five-week book study for educators all across Oregon. That was led by Ms. Fitzgerald here, and the focus was on universal design for learning and how it connects to anti-racism. We learned a lot about understanding how current and traditional education systems don't allow room for all students to succeed. And how it's our job to provide those on-ramps to the highways of success. And throughout the book, she compares teaching learners to how, learning how to drive a car. And how we simply don't hand over the keys to a sixteen-year-old without proper practice, guidance, support, and direction. And UDL is building on-ramps by teaching students how to be learners. And how we need to be able to actively recognize existing barriers and do the work to turn them down. And there's so so much more that I can say, but I would recommend the book to anyone. You can borrow my copy if you'd like. And we also had some representation at the George Floyd Commemoration. And we have a video clip of our wonderful student speaker, if we could play that.
Need to continue to address. Events like today are important. The conversations taking place in schools, cities, and communities are important and need to continue. So we heard the name Makai Bryant in our Spanish presentation. How many of you know of her case? Can I get showhands? Okay, so those of you that don't know, Makai Bryant was a sixteen-year-old girl in Columbus, Ohio. Who had called the authorities to help her when there were girls attacking her outside of her house. Now, if you also don't know, Ohio has a standard ground law, which means that on your property, you can use lethal or deadly force to protect yourself. And that was what Makai was doing. And the police officer that arrived at the scene was there for fifteen seconds, fifteen seconds. Before shooting Makai four times in the back. No attempt at de-escalation, none at all. And this happened the same day that we got George Floyd's verdict. The black community could not celebrate for one day before we were struck with another injustice yet again. Now, this case is controversial, but then again, almost every other case involving a black person killed by police is controversial for some reason. Now, we have a long road ahead of us, not only as a community, but as a nation and as a globe. Because we know this doesn't just happen here. And the solution to that is education. We cannot hold back on teaching everybody about race theory. About the racism and bigotry that young, old, middle-aged people experience in this country. For five hundred years, we have been watching black people die in the streets every day for little to no reason. None at all. Yet, for some reason. A lot of people don't seem to care, because nobody really does care until it happens to you. And I say that heavily, because that could have been your sister, your brother, your dad, your husband, your wife. Your partner, your boyfriend, your girlfriend, anybody could have been out there and died. But we need to do better as a nation. We need to learn. We need to keep growing, because to stop learning is to stop growing. And we cannot stop learning and growing as human beings. Need to continue to address. Events like today are important.
All right, can everyone hear me okay? Perfect, okay. Um, I don't know about you all, but I got goosebumps, and I've seen that video before, and I was there live and heard Dom talking. So huge shout out to Dom. It's awesome seeing a young person just embody that and just go for it and be such a strong speaker. So huge shout out to her and Black Panther Student Union and CHS for creating such great student leaders. So one of the things that we have been up to this month is we partnered with our regional affiliations, the WESD and the SCSD. To offer what's called an affinity group. So an affinity group is a group of people linked by common interests or purpose. It could be a shared job. For example, you could have a board member meeting. It could be coaches. This specific affinity group is specifically for BIPOC educators, so black indigenous people of color. And this was a bi-weekly meeting offered around five-thirty at night on Wednesdays. And I was super excited. I got to attend last week, and we had some really good conversations. This is with BIPOC educators all across Oregon and school staff as well. So we got to hear a lot of different stories. You get a network and learn from each other. One thing that we talked about last week was critical race theory, which is the idea of looking at all aspects of our society. Economic, political, social, and examining how race intersects with all of those aspects of our society. Another thing we talked about as a group was a simulation, and we heard some really powerful stories of educators and school staff. Who are part of our Latinx community, who have shared that their native language was suppressed during their own schooling. And their native culture was suppressed. So it was really, really powerful as an educator to hear that, so that we know we're not recreating that in our classroom. And so again, super awesome site, safe space for BIPOC educators that we were able to participate in these last couple weeks. And then this, I'm really excited. So you all have probably heard a ton about our partnership with Western Oregon. It is officially called the Jedi Training. Huge shout out to Mandy Olson and Jackie from Western, who are really taking this on. And what's awesome about this, I don't know if you guys can take a look at that date. So the date that we're starting this is June twenty-third, which is after our contract, after school's out, after teacher workdays. And we have over fifty people who are choosing to participate in this, and I think that is amazing that, you know, it's been a year. We all know that. Whether you're a parent, a student, an educator, an administrator, it's been a hard year. Yet we still have over fifty people in our Central School District family that are committed to this work and willing to spend some time to do this. Um, so we're kicking it off strong with Dr. Batita Love, who is an amazing speaker, an amazing writer. And she is going to just bring her insight straight to us in Central, which is awesome. So she's currently a professor at University of Georgia. And she really pioneers this idea of abolitionist abolitionist teaching. Which is the idea that rather than just reforming or changing education, we're redesigning the whole thing. So really looking at the root of the problem and seeing why schools are failing kiddos. And really looking at the policies and working together to completely redesign that so all students are successful. And she preaches a lot about love, about protecting, a lot about building down or breaking down those barriers and building them up. And so we are super excited to welcome her, and I'm just really, really grateful that we've been able to do something like this for our staff.
And we'll also have another training session in August that will be a week long. And this is an outline of the topics that we're going to be covering. And as you can see, we start out with foundational and transformative restorative justice training. We have bilingualism, multilingualism, the foundations of gender and inclusive schools. And ending with equity practices, confronting opposition, and avoiding equity detours, which will be a very packed week.
Who are we? What do we do? We are a team of student leaders who believe in change. We believe in equity for all students and want to help make MAS a better place.
Gays, I hope you all heard that. That was one of our amazing fourth graders. I got permission to use her voice. And so what you're looking at is, if you remember, one of our district equity initiatives was to create. Staff equity teams at each building, and then we wanted to build on that by also creating student equity teams. And so similar to maybe Black Panther Union or multicultural club, we wanted to bring that to our elementary kiddos. So Alicia Preston, huge shout out to her, our mental health associate, has just taken this on and went off with it. So I'm really proud of our little, they're not little, they're fourth and third graders. But they did their first ever assembly. So what we did is we had them create posters, and they were displayed in our assembly and shared with the whole school. Um, so Emily, do you mind playing that one more time? Because this is our student who explains kind of what we're doing.
Who are we? What do we do? We are a team of student leaders who believe in change. We believe in equity for all students and want to help make MAS a better place.
Perfect. And then on the next slide, what you'll see are those posters I talked about. So one of our first lessons that Alicia shared with us is the idea of what is equity versus equality. So on my left, you'll see a picture, one of our students came up with a quote that was in our, one of the videos we watched. That equality is giving everybody a shoe, and equity is giving somebody a shoe that fits. And then he had the idea of tracing everybody's feet to just kind of show that everybody has a different shoe size. Everybody has different learning needs. Everyone has different social needs. And then on our right is one of our awesome fourth grade students, who, if you click the play, she's going to share what was in her poster.
Equity means to be in a school to. To learn for us to be successful. Another thing is to be fed, to have enough energy to learn. That's what equity means to me.
Then I'll let the other one play first, Emily, for the next slide.
Equity is giving everyone what they need. Equality is giving everybody the same thing.
So as you can see, it was pretty amazing hearing these third and fourth graders just nail the concept of equity versus equality. And I think this kind of shows that a lot of times we think that these conversations are above kiddo's heads, and they're not. They're living it every day, just like we are. So it's been really, really special to be a part of this team. And we're excited to see what we're going to do next year.
And lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge that it is June, which means it is Pride Month. And I just wanted to say to my fellow LGBTQIA+ staff members and students, happy Pride. You deserve to be loved and celebrated, not just this month, but every month. And I hope you're able to show up to school as your whole self, no matter what that looks like. And as an individual, part of the equity team, it is my job to advocate for a more inclusive curriculum. That will accurately reflect and represent LGBTQIA lives, both historically and in the present. And it's our job as educators and community members to ensure that you are attending a school where you are seen, valued, and loved. And that is my commitment to you, to work towards that reality every day, and thank you.
Thank you, Toni. Thank you, Micah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, that brings us to our superintendent's report.
And I, we just have a short, just quick, several updates, and we'll give Emily a second to switch to that presentation. And doing such a good job of running these virtual meetings with all the presentations, so. We thank her for that. So I I'm not going to spend a ton of time on this, but as Jane shared, and again, many of you being there on Friday. First off, what an amazing event. I have to give a just huge kudos and shout out to the leadership over at the high school. With what they did to really celebrate seniors. One of those pictures is Senior Awards Night. Uh, couldn't have asked for a better weather and week uh, to celebrate our seniors. Uh, below was going back to Ash Creek and opening up their um, the vault that they had put in as I think fourth and fifth graders. Um, so fifth graders uh, to, to just watch the students uh, be together and, and share those stories. And then that upper right was just a beautiful evening of, of graduation. So again, just wanted to share those successes and, and being able to really highlight our seniors uh, as they've gone through a uh, you know, one of probably the hardest years all of us have been through, but to even be a senior in high school and uh, to be able to end this way was pretty successful. So uh, thank you to all the seniors. Thank you to staff and to the leadership at Central High School uh, for making all of that happen for them this year. Next slide for me. Uh, the next slide is just, again, I'm just updating the hybrid numbers, not a fair amount of changes that you see with uh, what we have going on through the end of the school. We still have about fifty-nine percent of our students that are uh, in person with forty-one percent that are still uh, virtually online. Um, so again, just updated numbers there. The next slide is uh, specifically about summer school. We are moving, applications are all in uh, to the state. We have interest surveys that were shared out and we've received information back. Applications are going out now um, to register students. We have staff hired. Um, and I can't say enough for the staff that are gonna continue to work through, with us throughout the summer. Uh, again, all of this is focused on, um, part of the day will be focused on academics and the rest of the day will be focused on enrichment. Uh, that enrichment involves partnership with the Y M C A, partnership with Western Oregon, um, partnership with the consortium that we work with and just our staff uh, gonna do some amazing things for, with our students uh, this, this summer. Uh, high school uh, credit earning, again, we did um, have some students that didn't cross that finish line and we do have students that um, you know, we talk about being on track for graduation that are that are behind. So we're, we'll be able to be moving forward with that credit earning over the summer. And then we'll start to share more information. We've really been focused on summer school and getting that up and running uh, cause that will start the end of June and then go through July. Um, we will share more information over the summer about uh, the jumpstart. So again, we're, we're finishing the year, have summer school going and then we'll, we'll move, maneuver uh, to uh, the jumpstart and then, and then moving into the fall. The next slide is just, uh, it's a, I will tell you, it's a great slide to see for so many reasons that we are now consistently moving in the direction of under a hundred. I couldn't tell you the last time that ha- that has been, so. Um, that is really positive news, especially as we continue forward. As shared, we um, have, and, and again, you talked, you've heard me talk about tools in the toolbox. The vaccine is one of those. Obviously, having the Health and Wellness Center, we have had one uh, vaccine clinic at the middle school. They come back uh, the week of, I believe they're there June sixteenth. Uh, and then we are also working with Polk County uh, in collaboration at the end of June. They have uh, Polk County or Oregon Health Authority has a mobile vaccine that, that potentially will be uh, on district uh, site for about a week. So uh, just really excited again to have that tool for people that um, have the ability to have that, that we um, you know, continue to move in that direction. The next um, slide, I just want to spend a little bit of time with because again, as has been shared um, really from when we had our community meeting in April, um, that we were asked to just be transparent with uh, data as it relates to our students, uh, specifically um, information related to COVID nineteen or those that have been exposed to it. Um, and again, there is a report that is done by uh, the Oregon Health Authority. It's done every week. Um, there are two tables in that. Table seven uh, which is in the document, uh, really includes all the schools that have one or more cases of COVID nineteen with either students or staff and volunteers. Um, so the bottom half of that is the thus far, the May um, information that was, where the cases actually were identified coming from our school. So again, you can see we had three students at Ash Creek on the uh, eh, uh, excuse me, March, excuse me, May eighteenth, one staff member had a a small out, outbreak at Talmage and then at Central High School. Um, so again, that can be found on, if you go and, and type in Oregon Department of Education, Oregon Health Authority, uh, school reports, uh, COVID nineteen, you'll be able to access that. Uh, table seven again is the, the, the current exposures and then table eight are those that have been resolved. The number up above, um, and again, I can't say enough to our uh, families. Uh, again, we have said if students are sick or if staff are sick, to please stay home. Families have done an amazing job of that and have also then communicated to us if their student has had COVID or has been exposed and we continue to uh, track that. Again, you can see the number, uh, when you look at that March, April, May, that first line, uh, the left number is the, the positive cases and then the number on the right is the close contact. So again, we've been tracking that throughout uh, this spring since we came off of, of spring break when we really have had students back into the the, the classroom. So again, just wanted to continue to show uh, the, the data that we're collecting. But again, it's, it is nice. We have not had very many staff uh, this spring that have had to quarantine. Uh, so that's been, been nice and then continue to work with our families uh, and partner with them should we have any exposures uh, from from within the school or again, family sharing with us so we can make sure um, we can get that information out should they have been at school. So we're, we're very appreciative to our families for that continued partnership. Next slide for me, please. So the, that, what I, I'm gonna take a little bit of time on this slide. This is the roadmap to really getting to the final guidance for Ready School Safe Learners that will go potentially into the fall. Um, so again, I'm sort of gonna move from the left to the right with dates. May twenty-sixth, they started some draft discussions with us um, and released uh, information to gather input from all of us. Um, they then engage, excuse me, they, they have been engaging, let me start to step back one, from the middle, end of April through May. Uh, they have been engaging with different groups. There are superintendent groups, uh, family or community groups, nonprofit groups, um, O E A, uh, O S C A groups. Um, and then anyone across the, the state to really just get some engagement of, of what are some of the things that schools and communities have been dealing with. Uh, that discussion draft was developed and shared with us. Uh, through that, uh, from May twenty-sixth through June tenth, they have been uh, sharing that back out and then asking us to complete surveys. We went that, through that. I went through it actually a week before um, with an outside group that I was a part of and then also did that with our superintendent group. So the state's really trying to gather input from all the voices. That survey closes this weekend. Again, they've, they've just been continuing, Oregon Department of Ed has been continuing to do that um, gathering of input from many, many stakeholders. On June seventeenth, because there are a few things that um, were in place this last year. One of those examples is there is within the number of minutes that we have to count for students, we can count up to uh, thirty hours for professional development, thirty hours for um, conferences. This past year, we could count ninety hours for conferences and ninety hours for P D because of the heavy lift we had to do. So some of those discussions are, are going back to the state board. Uh, one of those also is potentially is uh, the rules for instructional minutes, um, not being so tight. Again, we have seen some of the great work and I'm gonna give a shout out to the high school of uh, the staff working and really students being able to show proficiency that they, they can, they, they can really show that they have met the standards uh, that they're required to do specific to graduation. Um, we believe that the framework for the fall, again, it's not gonna be the full details, but the goal is that there will be enough information uh, for us there that will be released on June twenty-fifth. Uh, we've seen different things. For example, uh, one of the, the pieces right now is it looks like there will still be some requirements for masks indoors. Uh, not so much and we, we've seen that um, not as much outdoors. Uh, that's just again, one of those examples that we may, may see in the framework. And then uh, we expect the final release of that guidance to be, be July twenty-second. Um, as I have shared since really the middle of, I think it was April where we have said our goal is to be back in person. We are building for that and continue to have those conversations with our administrative team and obviously our, our union leadership. But again, just wanted to give you the timeline of, of what we're looking at. Again, there could be some nuances, but uh, like I said, we're gonna, we're building to be back in a person, but knowing that there probably will be some key pieces um, that we'll have to um, follow guidance wise. And then last is just some of our next steps that we'll continue to do and then I'll open it up for questions. Again, we continue to have conversations with Polk County Collaborative. We did have a change last week. Um, many of you may have remembered, there was a increase of an out, outbreaks that was paused or that, that caused us to go to fourteen day quarantine. They have uh, backed off of that. So the quarantine process is a little bit different again. We're gonna, gonna continue to monitor the cases. Uh, we'll do that even over summer school. We know that that has been shared, that uh, isolation and quarantining and tracking, if we have any cases, will be part of our processes again in uh, into next year. Uh, we're excited to continue the implementation of the summer programming, uh, building the central online academy and then again, just continuing to build towards that twenty-twenty-one uh, with the framework and guidance coming forward to, to, for whoever wants to be in person will be able to do that. So questions for me from that part, if any?
Already talked about how long Ready School Safe Learners is gonna be around?
Uh, I, generally, we have heard at least through next year. Now again, I think how much of the changes, I think that, that as we get into the fall and I'm gonna say probably into the what I call the flu season, which tends to be October through February, March. Um, I, I, I think we will still have some of that guidance. I think after that, you know, at some point it will.
Somebody still remembers that we didn't used to have the O D E telling us how to work our day to day.
Yeah. I, I think a lot of this is still in collaboration between the Health Authority and, and Oregon Department of Ed. So um, yes, we are completely understand that.
I think one of the things we've heard though too is they, it is likely that actually O D E and the Oregon Health Authority will not be as involved as our local public health authorities. So that there will be more localized and individualized guidance and requirements and districts may be doing things differently depending on their circumstances, their capacities um, and their local public health authorities.
And that's, I feel really confident in that because of the relationship that we have built this year with them. So.
Oh yeah, that's fine. We, we just need to get out of the mode of having the state tell us what to do every day.
I think we're moving in that direction to more localized.
In, in the roadmap that they're, they're looking at, is there, you know, statewide, there's a lot of emphasis on vaccination and the seventy percent kind of magical number. Is that, is the O D E also looking at that as kind of a threshold? If we can get, no, it's different. Yeah, true, but then the adults where the risk is, is in fact correlated to the vaccination rate. So.
That's just what, what we're hearing now. And again, like Jen said, this could change by July based on additional C E C guidance and other things. It's schools and healthcare settings will continue to potentially have different guidance than the general public.
And, and again, that's why I think masks, again, that has been very clear to us that that may still be part of our process again, because of the zero to twelves not having it yet.
Distance.
So distancing has been um, not as, yes, if you, you know, again, with some of the key things that we're looking at. I think that's one of the key things that there um, where, where we may have some flexibility. Um, and again, so I, I think that's going to be uh, some of the, the key things that we're talking about as, as our administrative team, what does that look like? Um, again, being able to, um, are there things that we can put in place but still begin to bring kids back to that, you know, those that want to be in the buildings and to that social environment that we have known in the past. So you know, all of that is going to be part of that, that continued conversation. So that is.
I think one of the key phrases we'll see in the guidance is to the extent possible, to the extent possible. Distancing to the extent possible, but spacing probably is not going to be a reason not to have every kid that wants to be in person, in person.
They're, and they're very clear about that.
So if we say we can't possibly have every student who wants to be in person, if we have to maintain the three feet spacing on buses, then we would waive that or be able to waive that in order to achieve the goal of every student who wants to be full day every day in person learning in.
To the extent possible.
Correct.
To the extent possible and part of that is to the extent we can contact trades, cause that will still be required.
Yep.
There will still be some way of cohorting, some way of judging if we need to move students in and out of in-person learning based on exposures.
Do we get any information from uh, county health or from uh, Oregon Health Authority on uh, how uh, I guess the question is what percentage of our uh, twelve to eighteen year olds are getting vaccinated? Is that is that happening or, or is not happening or?
Yes, I, I have not asked them generally lately um, what the numbers are. Um, yes, the, the, they're, they're willing to share those general numbers with that. I think uh, one of the things and, and again, we're trying to be partners in this is uh, bringing the vaccine, a- again, having the health center be able to do that. Uh, bringing the vaccine, working with Salem Health to bring the vaccine onto the campus at Talmage. That day, we had a hundred and I think it was a hundred and thirty-two shots in arms. Um, and, and a fair amount of that were, I, I'm gonna, again, what was conveyed to me was that twelve to sixteen, there were some adults in that. And so again, it's a tool in the toolbox. If, if, we, we would just wanna give those, those spaces for people that are uh, wanting, wanting to, to do that. So a- again, we're, that's where we're trying to help out with that, that part of the tool. Um, that does help. Um, I don't think it's ev- you know, it's the only tool that, that is gonna help us continue to move forward and have students in, in the buildings, but it is, it is one that has been helpful. Again, I, I'm gonna speak for our staff. We have had very little staff out this spring. And again, you know, I generally have an idea. I don't, I'm not gonna share that cause that's personnel information, but have a general idea of how much of our staff um, has been. And, and to be very honest, um, some of the staff that has not been able to is because of some of the medical issues and has been advised by their um, doctors to, to not at this point. And so we have to honor that and we're gonna continue to work. And that's, we know that that's gonna be the same for families as well.
And we have to keep those people safe.
Yep. So that's again, why I, I think these will not disappear for at least our through this, I'm gonna say at least through the flu season again, with whatever that means. Any other questions with, with that? Well, again, we'll keep updating uh, with the framework coming out, hopefully the twenty-fifth. Obviously, our July meeting will be sharing, we are meeting with principals even this Thursday for a pretty intense uh, continued conversation about what does this look like based off the information that we have um, as we continue to, to build and move in, in that direction. We've learned a lot this, we've learned a lot since March when we've had kids back in school. And then um, obviously the high school and the middle school with having them be under three feet are gonna just continue to help guide our learning as we move into the, to the fall.
Yeah, from a timing standpoint, I'm just trying to think about.
It's terrible.
Yeah, so the new guidance comes out into July.
Yeah.
Our August board meeting could be a pivotal board meeting potentially. Uh, we might need to do some type of a work session.
Yeah, we, we have it on the calendar. Yes. Um, there is, uh, and, and again, hopefully we um, as the twenty-fifth comes and there is, as she said, more of that, it's gonna be more at the local um, context. And then again, we have built in Polk County such a good relationship with the health department. Um, and, and again, I think that we are um, one of the model counties and what we have built collectively as a superintendent group with our, with our county. Uh, I think many people have sort of done similar to what we have done and it, I think that that's gonna help us in the long run uh, to make decisions and be able to, to move in. And then how do we deal if, if we, you know, again, as she said, if, if we don't have the space and we're Don't have the space and we're gonna go under that three feet, then we're gonna have plans in place of what that means and how we cohort. Uh, and be very, very clear about that. I think we've already built some of the good systems of that. We continue to um, adjust those. Uh, we have an outbreak team that meets every day at four o'clock. Um, sometimes it's five minutes, sometimes it's, it's thirty minutes of, of working through unique things, but um, because of that, we have some good things. In place that will help us as we go into the fall, and our principals have been phenomenal. If they get any information and the way that we have set up those things, it's gonna keep, allow us to continue to keep the buildings. Um, safe as we go into the, to the fall. So the only other piece that on my presentation is you'll see in there, there's a first reading of uh. Really a deletion of the reporting of suspected abuse of a child. Uh, we have an old version of that. We do need to um, update to the new version. Um, so you'll see in there, the new version. This is, um, this is an administrative rule. Normally, the board does not um, approve administrative rules, but because it is specific to reporting of suspected abuse of children. This is one of the required rules that, that you are, you as a board uh, need to approve. So again, we have had some major changes over the last few years in this law, and so um. Like I said, this will be a, approved by you. There's no action that needs to be taken tonight. Um, but this is, as it's considered the first reading, but many of the sections are similar to the previous that we had in our administrative rule. However, there, the steps for reporting are much more specific and spelled out. And that is it for me.
Great. Thank you for those updates. Uh, on the board report, board update, I don't have a lot. Uh, there are O S B A summer conferences being done virtually. The one that would be good for our incoming board member, if we could get word out to Byron. Is on the ninth of July, and actually for everybody, it's a good one. It's School Board Essentials. Uh, we also had talked, I think, last month about moving the date for, of our retreat. It's still in our package as the twenty-first. But I do think we should uh, look at moving that, because I know of it all. You said you were gonna be out that week. Um, and I don't know what our incoming board member's schedule is.
Yeah, we meet with him this, next week. Oh, yeah, we're, we're, we are in the process. We have, we have been in conversation with him already.
Okay.
But are trying to get a, a one-on-one with him to get him up to speed.
Concern about a date for that is we have to publish. And they, ahead of that meeting, the budget, the budget to adopt, the, the approved budget. And we have to publish that ten days ahead of the meeting, and we have to submit it obviously to the paper ahead of that. So the twenty-first is, we were going to conduct the budget hearing and adoption at that meeting. And we need to know that information by Friday. If it's going to be later than the twenty-first, we need to know not to publish it. It has to have the date and time of the hearing.
Well, we can do a separate board meeting just to handle the budget topic.
So, yeah, so.
If we were to push out the retreat, we'd still have to meet on the twenty-first.
You, you can meet on the twenty-eighth, or the twenty-ninth or the thirteenth. If it's gonna be after the twenty-first, that's fine. But I just don't wanna publish it as the twenty-first and then have you pick. The twenty-second for a meeting where you'd have to have two in a row. I can do it. We can do the, the, the budget part anytime before the thirtieth.
So we could, that, that wants to be a change. We had also talked about potentially just having the special board meeting for the budget. And then moving our retreat.
Yeah, and if you wanna do that, if you wanna keep it on the twenty-first, that's great.
So that's sort of what I built into our calendar.
But that is, it will be the public hearing where any public can comment on the budget, and then you go into session. You make your adoption motion and then we would. That would be the end, so.
I think that's what we should do. Let's plan for that on the twenty-first, and we'll push the retreat out to early August. And we'll confirm dates with everybody. We'll send out a survey for potential dates.
Yeah.
Great.
Correct.
Yeah, so that.
We, yeah, and I think we should look at doing it virtually.
We'll be here in person in case anybody wants to comment in person. Um, but, yeah, the rest of you could be virtual.
Yep, okay, uh. Our board meeting next month is a little bit later in the month. Is that because of the?
Holiday.
Holiday, okay, so pay attention to next month's meeting. Date, that's all I have. That then moves us to the consent agenda. It's our pretty, pretty typical consent agenda, our meeting minutes, personal reckon, recommendations. And we did include the superintendent evaluation summary that was done some months ago, but there has been some discussion about that. Yeah, it's because we hadn't included it publicly.
I would move that we approve the consent, consent agenda.
Thank you, Donna. Is there a second? Thank you, Jerry. All in favor of uh, approving the consent agenda, please raise your right hand. And Peggy, are you still on? Okay.
Yes, I'm still on, and yes, I, I, I approve.
Great, thank you, Peggy. And that brings us to our business agenda.
So we have uh, just three items that uh, we do want to talk through real quickly. Uh, two are calendars. One is the, the school calendar, and then the second is our calendar, which we'll, we'll address both. So uh, first uh, is the, uh, in the packet, you'll see the twenty-one, twenty-two school calendar. Just to talk you through how we have continued to build the calendar. Uh, we build several calendars each year. Um, and those were developed this spring. Uh, the, these initial calendars are reviewed by administrators uh, and manage, managers. We get feedback back from them originally, make adjustments. Uh, and then from that point, uh, the managers and the principals. Uh, take those to their buildings and departments to review, review with their staff and gather any feedback. That feedback event is shared back with us. We make adjustments to that. That calendar is then shared back to. Uh, district office staff and principals just to take one last look at it. Once we feel confident that we think we have a solid calendar, it is then shared with union leadership that has been shared. Um, with both of them. Um, so this is the current uh, school year. I, I will say. Uh, we are currently in negotiations, so the only item right now that's not noted on the calendar is our professional learning committee time. Um, when that will take place at each of the schools. Uh, what I can tell you is in our conversations, because there is still some movement with minutes, et cetera, so things may look a little bit. Uh, we may have more flexibility depending on what happens um. Through the state board that, but we are committed to this time, and we're still in conversations with our building leadership teams as well as our negotiations leadership teams. So I may be coming back to you with an updated calendar with this information, but. However, we felt it was really important to get the twenty-one, twenty-two calendar approved. Because a majority of the dates listed on this will not change, so it again allows families to plan. Um, as we head out in, as we're ending the school year, so there could be some minor adjustments to this. But uh, we believe that this is a, a pretty solid calendar uh, for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year. So with that, um, if there's any questions, and then I would, there's a motion.
How, how does the uh, jumpstart do stuff? We were talking at one point about doing stuff ahead of time, is that?
So that would, uh, cause we, that sort of falls into the summer schools here still, so those potentially are gonna fall either the weeks of. August second, we'll either start the week of August second, or we'll start the week of August ninth and go two or three weeks.
Okay.
So it literally will be up to um, be right before we go into some um, professional learning and workdays with our staff before we start.
But that's gonna be all staff related, not student related, there's not.
Jumpstart?
Yeah.
No, kid, students will be in, so it'll be kinders and first graders and potentially uh, sixth and seventh graders and ninth and tenth graders. Just those transition.
Kids?
Yes.
Alright.
So that, that is, we did not put that on the calendar. When we get that, we could add that on here as well, but that's gonna be specifically to certain grade levels.
Right, but obviously, parents of kids in those grade levels will wanna know.
Yep. That's our next step.
Gotcha.
Other questions about the calendar?
Do you need a motion to approve this tonight?
Yeah, we, we would like that. So we are asking as, a motion to approve as presented.
Do I hear a motion? Thank you, Jerry. Is there a second? Thank you, but all, all in favor of approving the calendar as presented, please raise your right hand. And Peggy, can you give a verbal?
Yes.
Thank you, Peggy. A motion to passes.
And then the next uh, board is, or the next calendar is actually our Board of Director calendar. Um, and again, this is our, identifies our board meetings for uh, the twenty-one, twenty-two school year beginning July twelfth. Which again is the week after the holiday. Um, this calendar also reflects returning to our every other month approach of. Our retreat in August and then every other month uh, beginning with uh, October, December and February with our board P L Cs. And then with April and May meetings for the Budget Committee. Um, you will see on here, I do have the retreat on the twenty-third. That doesn't mean, we, we have the board meeting on the ninth, just trying to. Um, the first couple of months of the year, we are actually moving to the second Monday of the month. Just because of the way the calendar falls and where school starts. Uh, we do get back uh, into a little bit more of that after uh, December. Just the way the first part of the year has fallen and where holidays are. Um, but again, we, you know, the one thing I would say is if we do want to move up the August. Either board meeting or retreat, we can, can do that as well um, for that, for that, from that perspective. The other thing is when we come to our retreat, if we feel that we need to have a P L C, for example, depending on what we. Receive July twenty-second, there could be at our retreat in August, we could talk about, do we need to do P L Cs? September, October, November and December, just as a um, you know, because we don't know what potentially is going to be. Um, put forward. Again, we are, we are excited that it's going to be more localized, which will give us again, more control. Um, as we continue to build that. So this is again, more of the traditional, knowing that we could make some adjustments if necessary. But do wanna get a Board of Directors calendar at least published.
Okay, and do you need a motion for this tonight?
I would if we can, or we can, you know, wait till our July meeting. Either one is, is fine.
Okay.
Um, we could post this as a draft on the, just on the website, so people have what our meetings will be for July.
I, I think we should do it as a draft, just because uh, Jan and Darcy are, I didn't see a present on the meeting.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna suggest to it all. Let's, let's just hold it till next month, and then we'll have Byron, and you may know more about your. Job situation, right?
Yes, um, yeah, but those times should be fine.
Okay.
So we, so if, if you're comfortable, I would like to post this as a, just as a draft on the website, even though we have not approved it, just because our July really starts on.
Yeah, it's probably not gonna change a whole lot. I mean, the retreat date is probably the one thing we'll wanna talk about next month, and even coming into it. Have some pre discussion about dates.
Yes.
Okay.
And then the last um, item on the business agenda attached it uh, in the, in our agenda is a resolution that we would like the board to adopt. And again, we have talked about the central online uh, school. We're really uh, moving towards building this as a program. Um, again, during our, this school year, we have implemented a comprehensive distance learning option for students. Obviously, that was due to the pandemic, and our polls of families this, this spring, about sixteen percent of our families identified they would choose the online option. Additionally, a principal servant Yon has done a survey at the high school with family members and, and students. And we've had about ninety-one high school families identify that they potentially would want to stay online as an option. Um, again, as a result of this, it is our desire to meet the needs of our students, uh, keeping them in Central School District. Uh, to offer that online learning through the Central Online Academy. Uh, this will be an independent program, so I wanna be clear. We had talked about potentially doing a separate school. Based on conversations that we have as initial starting point, this would be a program which students would be enrolled in. Students graduating from the Central Online Academy would, for this year, have a diploma. For the upcoming school year would still have a diploma from Central High School. Um, their enrollment would be full-time. Students are able to participate in extracurricular activities at the middle school and high school. If there's room, there might be some flexibility for other types of classes, electives, but again, that is based off of. Space and provided that may be limited. Um, this program will be open to anyone that is a resident within our school district. We have received requests from out of district. Um, that will be based on a case-by-case basis. Because again, we wanna service our, our resident students first uh, and foremost. Um, we'll have designated staff that's gonna be based on our, the projected enrollment, uh, which we're, we're beginning to get. Um, and then again, this is gonna be a continued partnership with Stride, and then Edgenuity is another um. Program that we use, we use at the high school that's really specific to credit re- recovery. Um, the, as I shared, the layout of this will be similar to our model that we have implemented, and we are hearing that we, this will be some of the key. Um, steps that we will need to continue in online, that it has to be fifty percent of the time needs to be in, uh, be done synchronous. Uh, with a teacher, um, some one-on-one time, still having that, and then there would be some asynchronous time. The other thing that we're looking at is because we had, do have the Ash Creek Annex uh, that we bought, that, that could also be a tutoring center. For students to be able to drop in as well. Uh, we're continuing to have conversations with our union leadership because there is interest at some point. Of our teachers taking the lead on that because of the shortage that we have right now with. Um, teachers, we're still in those conversations to potentially work with our current partners and then work our way into with our. Um, additional staff that we may have um, as we move forward with this and the success of it, so. Um, I am really asking for the board this evening to uh, again, I'll answer any questions or questions that you have. But uh, to move to authorize the district to continue the planning and programming and staffing of the online academy as we move forward. We have talked about it, but I, I do want that sort of in a resolution approved by the board.
I have one quick question. Um, secondary classes, is that what you were talking about as far as electives go? Is that with secondary classes?
Yeah, so that, yes, so electives, that, again, we may still do that online because there is those options. Uh, again, with, with uh, our goal is to have all of that be Oregon licensed, um, and they believe. Uh, in talking with Stride, because I continue to say in conversations with them that they have Oregon licensed teachers to be able to support. Um, that, as we, as we build into this, and then like I said, we will continue to work with our unions. We continue to have those conversations with them. But yes, but all that would be potentially, if we have room for electives.
Okay, well, I moved to authorize the district to continue planning for programming and staffing of Central Online Academy for the twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Thank you for the all. Is there a second? So, uh, before I call the question, um, I wanna have a little bit more discussion. Um, you know, I'm in favor of the, the motion, but I'm also interested in seeing more definition around how this is gonna work. So this is giving the, the district the go-ahead to keep planning, that I think there should be maybe. A target date, maybe it's August that we see a more formal charter.
Absolutely.
And um, yeah. The, the topic of staffing levels has come up. The question in my mind is. How do you really decide who gets to attend? How do we measure it? How do we know if it's working or not? There's a lot of questions that I think we can keep working on, and I know you are, but uh.
No, but I, I think that's interesting too, because those are the questions the state has, which is why some of these things like. This fifty percent synchronous time. Districts that already have online public charter schools are panicking, because that is not their model. And the fact that that might be a go-forward for all of them. Um, puts them at a serious disadvantage, because suddenly they have to have more staffing. So it, um, I think it, and, and those questions about what are the standards?
Yeah.
And I think probably what you'll see is, the state won't come out with online school standards, but they will come out with a. Process by which they're gonna start evaluating it.
Yeah.
In the future, yeah.
I'd also like to make sure that we're, you know, thinking about other things. Yeah, I'd also like to make sure that we're, you know, thinking about other things that we've already been doing online and how this affects some of the programs that we've been doing and just the whole comprehensive planning. So I know that you're, you know, getting there, but, you know. So, yeah, that's my thought is.
I would also say that it's going to be just like the COVID rules were this year. It's going to be a fluid situation. And so it's something that would be good to have on maybe every other board agenda, just to kind of keep us posted.
And I think that's definitely as we get into the retreat. I think this is one of those that we will, we will want to share out in my reporter, again, to be very honest. Julie's team that will be coming, that will be sharing more about that here in the future of who's going to be joining us from that perspective. That I think we have some really good people that have a background in that as well. So we're excited about to share more at some point with you all as we take those next steps also. But I think that's a really good idea as well done.
This will be a good time to use your go-slow-to-go-fast model.
Right, absolutely. Again, I think that we're going to learn and build from what has been successful this year. Again, I think we have a partner that very much, when I first said to Stride, I don't want to do what we've done. We have to have teachers in front of students. And, you know, again, we're helping them shift their model as well. I will tell you, if this shifts, if this shifts to, and again, C's talked about in our budget committee about enrollment. If they're truly shifting all online, where you really can't do that asynchronous, and there is some, students have success, more of the older secondary students have success in that. I do think we could see an influx in enrollment if they completely not grandfather in and truly make everybody shift to that synchronous type of approach that there could be, we could see some gain in enrollment as well. So just something to continue to think about.
Has he, Peggy, I can't see whether you're trying to ask any questions. I just thought I'd double-check with you before I call the question on the motion. Are you good?
I am good, and I appreciate all the questions that you've asked. And I still do have a lot of questions about online learning, but I know that Jen will work through those and keep us informed.
Great. Okay, all in favor then of passing the motion to proceed with the planning and implementation of the Central Online Academy? Please raise your right hand and/or Peggy.
Yes, yes.
Great. Thank you very much. That completes our business agenda tonight. At the point now where board members can share any closing comments before we adjourn into executive session. Anybody they'd like to share tonight?
Just the main thing I wanted to share was to make sure that Donna and her team get a real, had a boy, had a girl, whatever it is for graduation. I thought it went very well. It was, I think somebody said it was one of the closest things we've done to normal throughout the year.
Yeah, a lot of people saying that.
I will, I will make sure that that is shared.
I've lost, I've lost Base Camp. I don't know where it is.
Hey, Peggy, can you mute for us?
Multi-tasking. That's the way of the world these days.
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
I just wanted to add real quick about the tours that I took of the schools last month. I thoroughly enjoyed getting the tours from everybody. And I don't know when the last time everybody else was gone, well, I mean, with the exception of Jen and C, so I'm sure you guys are there all the time. But it was, it was great to see what the kids were doing in action, the way it's been, we've been hearing about it and all the last month and a half of the in-person learning and how it's working. And to see it at work in person, it was, I was, I was happy to see how well it was working and how happy kids were to be in school and following rules. And from the littlest kid to the oldest kid, I mean, people were just doing what they're supposed to do to be there and just learning about different aspects of the school. The sped program at MES, I had no idea that it was as deluxe as it is. I mean, it's, there's some amazing things happening there for sped students. But yeah, I would, I want to do it again, you know, because I don't think I, I mean, I'm sure there's something new I could learn each time. So, yeah, if anybody else wants to go, I'd be more than happy to go with you.
Thanks for that all. Okay. Jerry?
I would just say kudos to the teachers and all the support staff. It's been a really tough year. And it's been tough on the kids, been tough on the teachers, been tough on everybody as far as controversy. You know, some kids thrived on it, some didn't do so hot. But I think as far as staff did the best they could. And so you have to give them credit for that and praise for that. Because like I said before, no matter what you do this year, nobody's going to like it. So anyway, better days ahead.
I was reminded that at the high school graduation, that it's not just about the high school staff, but it's every, every staff member along the way. And I was reminded of that because so many of the kids that were going on to Oregon State were part of a LEGO robotics team that competed in the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. I think we're the first ones to make it to the state level. And you could, there's a correlation there. I mean, there's no doubt about that. But the high school teachers give a lot, you know, deserve a lot of credit. But everybody in the entire community that makes up Central 13J deserves credit. And that is truly a celebration of a team effort that's pretty remarkable. So it's always the highlight of the year. So with that, my battery died, so I can kind of make up the closing comment here. So under the provision of ORS 192.660, Open Meeting Law, the Board of Directors will enter executive session for the following purpose, to conduct deliberations with persons designated to carry on labor negotiations. Specific information discussed in executive session shall not be made public and shall remain undisclosed. The board may return to open meeting to take action on executive session discussion if needed, but that is not expected tonight. So thank you, everybody, for joining or listening in.